November 16th. I want to apologize for our lateness. We had a couple of meetings prior to this that went a little long. First item is roll call and all the persons are present in the chambers. And on to item three is the Pledge of Allegiance and Silent Prayer in lieu of information. Please stand. Wisconsin Rapids Fire Department recognition for First Responder of the Year Award for Dustin Lees. Chief? Or if you want to come up here and use my mic.
So on March 18th of this year, Wisconsin Rapids Fire Department was dispatched for a male patient having chest pain. Assessment showed the patient needed to be transported to Wasos virus hospital for a life-saving catheterization for an active heart attack. During transportation of that patient, he came upon a motorcycle crash as they neared Lake Dubé. Knowing that the patient was stable, they stopped to render care. After a quick assessment by Dustin, he realized his victim was in critical condition and sent the remaining two paramedics and a patient to the hospital so he could receive the needed time-sensitive catheterization that would save his life while they grabbed the needed equipment and rendered care to a motorcycle crash victim. Patient was lying face down in the ditch and his motorcycle and helmet were 50 to 100 yards from him. Realizing that this had just happened, he called 911 and advised that this patient would need a helicopter. He then gave care to the patient until emergency services showed up on scene. Realizing Dustin was a paramedic, they requested that Dustin continue to stay there and help care. Patient was eventually transported via air to a local trauma center for multi-system trauma with a serious head injury, lacerate liver, and multiple rib fractures. The outcome that day could have been very different had Dustin not stopped and rendered care. Professional at all times, proficient in all tasks, polite to everyone we meet, and compassionate to all need and need is our mission. That day, Dustin displayed every aspect of that statement. Dustin is an example of the dedication and skills each member at WRFD exhibit daily while serving the citizens of this city. Dustin, myself, and all the members of WRFD congratulate and applaud you on your award, and I now present to you the 72nd District First Responder of the Year, Dustin Lees.
Guess if you want to sneak out, this might be the time. Everybody kind of just wonders when. Okay, we're on to item five of the agenda, which is the reading of the minutes of the previous meetings held October 19th, November 11th, and then November 16th, special meeting. I guess just to let everybody know, we do not have our clerk here, obviously, tonight. So Sue and I are trying to coordinate to take minutes and record votes, but we don't have our voting board, so we'll make sure that we take the votes slow, and I need to make sure to announce them clearly to the public. So what are your wishes?
Move to approve.
So a motion by Dean.
Second.
Second by Jake. Any discussion on the minutes? Yep, go ahead.
I'm sorry. And I wasn't sure what Sue was... I had asked her, in the HR minutes from October 11th, there's a mistake in those minutes, but I don't know if we want to wait till we get to the HR portion for those, or do those now? I'm not sure.
If we do minute correction now, correct?
That was in the packet, yes. It was the HR minutes from October 11th. It said that it was motion by Veneman, second by Evanson to approve a request from Mayor Blazer for organizational restructure. I believe that was Mr. Benp.
Did the motion or the second?
The second.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. With that correction made, seeing no further discussion, let's do a voice vote. All in favor say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Okay, that motion carries. We're on to item 6A. To consider a resolution extending the Emergency Declaration proclamation regarding the COVID-19 pandemic. I guess I'd like to start by saying that I don't think this resolution is really necessary. You know, if there's an issue or a problem, we have Zoom. You know, given everything going on now, it's nothing like it had been, and so I guess I personally don't feel that I need this. And I know I've said that in the past, but I just think that we have options here that we can quickly assemble, should we need to assemble. Just my thoughts.
And make a motion to discontinue.
So are we motioning to discontinue or to continue and then not voting for it? Like, is there a...
We have to make a motion in the positive.
I would prefer affirmative motion, so.
So would you be willing to change it to you make a motion to approve the declaration? Or to extend it? Yeah.
Make a motion to approve the declaration.
Okay, we have a motion by Sherry and seconded by Matt. Go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. And I think I'm going to support the motion. It's another tool that is given to the mayor, but I think that in the day that we're in, the age that there are ways, I guess, to bring the council together more quickly than it could have been done in the past years. But I think also there's authority that as the mayor, in the case of emergency, that you have to do things to protect the city and to keep it operating and functioning in that anyway. It's kind of a... It's a good thing, I think, a good thing to have, but it's, I don't know that it's a necessary thing that we have. I think it's just, it gives another tool, I think, to you. But I think there are tools that you have at your hand to use if you need to.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote, we'll do a roll call vote. Ryan?
No.
Dean?
Nay.
Matt? Tom?
No.
Sherry?
No.
Jake?
No.
Patrick?
I got to be clear on this. We're stopping this now? Is that what's happening? By voting no, I'd be putting a stop to it?
Yes. So did I... Is that you're voting... Okay. You're not voting? Oh, okay, thank you. And then Jake?
No.
All right. That motion failed, so we can move on. So item B is consider adoption of a resolution adopting the tax levy in 2022 City of Wisconsin Rapids budget. We have an entourage from the library here that's willing to answer any questions. I think they have a designated speaker, maybe. And... So what are your wishes? Go ahead.
I'd just like to make a statement, particularly on the library budget reduction. It's very concerning to me that multiple motions were made last week to cut up to 60% of the McMillan Library budget with less than a week of notice before budget approval. Singling out one entity of the city's budget to take a major cut is entirely unfair and in my opinion irresponsible because of the consequences of what that cut would bring. A 60% budget cut would shut the library down. The proposed 30 and 10% cuts could severely damage the valuable community resource we have. This council has the authority to make these cuts, but I would like to ask to give the library board an appropriate amount of time to work through a potential cut if desired and to consider budget reductions across the board instead of singling out the library. I would like to make it clear that if it is council's desire to reduce the library's budget, it will be the library board that decides how those cuts are imposed. Currently, library board members include a current and former city council member, a current and former county board member, the superintendent of Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools, and other professionals that, in my opinion, bring valued experience and insight to better shape the future of the library. McMillan is nearing the completion of the Learning Futures Project. Once completed, the board plans to conduct a classification and comprehensive study of library staff, a review of services, formulation of a new five-year strategic plan, and reassessment of the budget. It is my opinion that council should trust the library board to guide the library by allowing the completion of the aforementioned plan before any major cuts are imposed. Thank you. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I would like to open up the floor for Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools Superintendent Craig Bourne to make a statement on behalf of the library board.
Sounds good.
Appreciate it. So as Mr. Austin outlined, under Wisconsin State statute, public school superintendent and his or her designee are automatically a member of the library board in any municipality within the district boundaries, which is what explains my presence here tonight, as well as the fact that our library board conducted an emergency meeting last evening to discuss the potential consequences of a significant budget reduction. So to really cut to the chase and be to the point, I believe Mr. Austin basically provided you what our request and argument would be in terms of the ability to be proactive as a governing body of the library to make decisions with regard to where we may find various aspects in budget reductions. We haven't had the opportunity as a governing body to enter into those conversations regarding $50,000, much less $800,000, and would appreciate that opportunity so we don't, you know, run the risk of completely devaluing and devastating what we have available in Wisconsin Rapids VR Library in terms of programming as well as facilities and infrastructure. So that basically is the long and short of it. We too, as a library board, understand and recognize the council's authority to outline and dictate what the budgets of the various departments and entities would be within the city. We respect that. It's just the request that we are a member at the table and able to rationally debate and have conversations as a governing board to identify areas of cost savings over time and have enough time to do that in a proactive and reasonable fashion. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Any questions, comments? Go ahead, Patrick.
So the budget was first brought to us here in October. The actual first time that we were able to be as a council and do anything about it was on Thursday. Whenever we... So we had talked about reducing the library budget. We've done comparative analysis like at other municipalities our size. Right now, we are paying over $67 per person for the library, and if you look at other municipalities our size, you're looking at at least half that. A lot of people are in their $20. Most of them are half of that. I don't think anybody here, a vote to reduce their budget is a vote against the library by any means. I think we're all here, every council member is for the library. I think what we are against is having the Wisconsin Rapids residents pay such a high amount as compared to other municipalities. So even with the reduction, because what we're supposed to do is give them an appropriation, correct? An appropriation of... Well, what would be appropriate? The state has figured that out, and Tim has given us that number. There would be a reduction by $800,000. That's what is appropriate. So in my view, I'm all for the library. Can't see... And I also agree with Mr. Austin when he says that it shouldn't just be the library being singled out, and it wasn't our intention to, or my intention, to single out the library. We had also discussed sending back the budget to each department head and having them reduce the budget so that we could have a balanced budget. So last Thursday was the first time that we were able to make any motions or talk about it as a common council. Now we did that, and I'm still for any reductions to help save on the residents of Wisconsin Rapids, to help them save and come more in line with other municipalities what they're paying for their library system. Even at this reduced budget, even if you did take out the $800,000, they're still at way over a million dollars. So there's a lot of county libraries that run their whole system on less than a million dollars. So that's where I'm at.
Thank you.
I'm listening to what Mr. Delaney says, and I'm kind of confused. I know you gave us a bunch of comparisons to the different libraries, but I'm just cautious about if those are comparing apples to apples according to the research, you know, that was done. I didn't see it all. And the only thing that I'm worried about, I know the library is going through big changes right now, remodeling, and the only thing, I guess I'm not willing to come a week before, a couple of weeks before the budget is due, but I've heard from some calls that I've gotten that they are looking at, you know, maybe taking a peek at that next year and reining some things in. And the only thing that I would... I know Jake had made a motion last week about the $150,000. And the only, the line item, and I know the council doesn't choose what, where it goes, that's the library board's discretion. But one thing I'd like you guys to look at in the future is, I'm not saying every single thing in the library is new, but like the line item for 2022 for the library and building and grounds is $140,000, and the furnishings and fixtures are $78,000. For '21, it was $130,000 and $69,000 respectively. With the remodel, I don't understand why those numbers would keep going up after this year when there was remodeling done. So that's just one of the big things as well. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
What's being asked of us right now, again?
You are adopting resolution for the tax levy and the 2022 budget.
So we're saying, at this point, we want to see if we're going to pass it or not?
Correct.
Okay. So again, I, speaking of our last meeting, I apologize. I kind of jumped the gun a little bit in terms of how that was done. I do have a... I have a hard time understanding, like, this is how it plays out in my head. Roughly, we have a $40 million budget, but then at the end of the budget, so we take up the $40 million, and then at the end of it, we say, well, we still have to do the roads. So in order for us to do the roads, because everybody's going to agree that we need the roads, so we have to say yes to the roads. So we fill up the $40 million budget, then we say, okay, we still got to do the roads, so we need $2 million. We can borrow a million and a half dollars for the million and a half that we need, and then we can charge the residents a special assessment for somewhere in the ballpark of $500,000. So there's our $2 million. But in reality, I guess this is just the way I kind of grew up. Government was there to, you know, police, fire, and roads. I know there's more to it. I know that's simplistic, but I feel like the streets should be at the front end of the budget. They should be in there right away so that they're taken care of. So then at the end of the budget, when we say, okay, we've covered everything we need to cover, we have our $40 million kind of taken up, now we want to do this, this, and this, so in order to do it, we need $2 million, whether that would be the library, or that would be shuttle system, or that would be other things that we want that aren't, like, important to the infrastructure of what it takes for us to run the city and live in the city. So I realize, again, I jumped the gun a little bit, but I think the, what I'm saying in my, at least in my head, sounds pretty sound that we need to fix the budget, and that's $2 million over. So I know what's being said then is, well, let's wait. Let's wait till next year. And I'm pretty sure that that's something that probably is said at the end of the budget, because you're right, now we're rushed. Like, we have all these questions, because we just figured out, like, kind of what's happening and how we're supposed to be doing it. Now we're rushed into, like, I mean, we only have a few weeks. Like, why would we start asking the questions now? But in the end, we don't necessarily know what questions to ask until we get to this point. And then if you start asking questions, what I'm kind of hearing right now is, well, okay, then what services are you going to cut? Well, I personally don't think we have to cut any services. Or who are you going to fire? And I don't think we have to fire anybody. I think that we can find the $2 million in the budget. We need time to do it, and that's what I kind of, why I kind of backed off and said, okay, if we need time to do it, I can understand that. But we need to start as soon as this budget is passed. And this budget is passed with a $2 million deficit. So now we got to start right away figuring out how to get that $2 million out of next year's budget. But at the same time, will it happen? That's always the question, because everybody's busy, everybody goes on, and, you know. So what I understand from Mr. DeSorci is, we can do this. Like, we have to decide to do it and do it. What I would consider a win for the residents of our city today and for this budget cycle is to make a commitment. Or I guess what I'm going to do is, I'm going to make a motion to find the $500,000 that we're going to need for special assessments, and instead of charging the residents, who have already paid for the streets, more money when they put the street in in front of their house, that money we find in the budget. And that's a 1.25%, roughly, what we need to find in the budget, one and a quarter And that way, we take the burden off of the citizens, the residents that are paying the bill to begin with, and the hopes then is that we can, because it's taking more time than we thought to really get all the information we need for the transportation utility, which could be a good thing, but at the same time, we do know that it's just another tax on top of all the other taxes. Even though we're going to call it a fee, it's going to be more for the residents. This way, it's a win for the residents to find that one and a quarter of their money that they already paid in to take care of special assessments and take that burden off of the residents.
Just to, I'm sorry, just to confirm, so your motion is to reduce the budget by $500,000 to cover special assessments?
Yes.
Okay. So we have a motion?
Second.
We have a second by Dean.
I guess to understand your motion, it's $500,000 on the expenditure side, but are you still adopting the tax levy? Could you clarify the question for me, please?
Sure. I mean, obviously, the expenditure side, but, you know, obviously, we have the tax levy that's part of the budget that really is what really needs to be approved before, by December 1st. So basically, you'd be adopting the budget with expenditures reduced by $500,000 to basically fund or the special assessments into the future.
Yes.
Is that what you're saying, so that necessarily we would not then have special assessments being billed out starting next year?
Yes. And does that fit in, so it's not changing the levy? The levy stays the same?
Correct. Right, because you're offsetting the special assessment revenue in the budget with that expenditure reduction.
We're putting the 500, we can say towards the special assessment, but in reality, it's going to the roads, yep.
Right, yeah, because so we have, you know, current special assessment revenue, but you're basically saying is that you're adjusting this year's budget to avoid, to basically end billing out or especially assessments in the future, so then when those aren't billed out and we see that revenue reduction, which would probably will show up partially in 2022 and mostly in 2023, but those expenditure reductions would be in place to account for that.
Yes.
Is that physically, is that possible, Tim? Tim, is that possible?
What are we not paying, then?
Well, because, okay, you know, right now, we have special assessments that we put on the tax roll. That's accounted for as that revenue, and I'm assuming those would continue? Or are we not putting those on going forward? Or, and then that we would stop putting specials, stop billing out special assessments in 2022, so then there would be no revenue for special assessments in 2020? That would start to kind of go down? Or are you saying that the current payment plans or what goes on, the tax roll on any basis, that would end also? I mean, it's a kind of a, you know, just, you know, ending special assessments, because there's current ones that people are currently paying on, and then there's the future ones that have yet to be billed for projects done this year and into the future. So that's why, I mean, it isn't, you know, exactly like, depending on how you do it or what, you know, how you're going to treat existing special assessments, factors in when those revenue reductions are going to occur throughout the future budgets.
Right. And I'm assuming the question I heard was, where is it coming from?
Right. So are you talking about, because the special assessments that were done this year, the hearing isn't until April of next year, where the work that's done already, the hearing would be in April, and that's when they would have to pay for those, right?
Yeah, well, the projects done there, yeah, we'd have the hearing in April, that's when the invoice would be generated. And then they have the choice of paying it in full, or depending on the amount of the special assessments, it would be put on a 5, 10, or 15-year payment plan that's put on the tax roll each year.
Okay, so if, Matt, you're talking about...
Right?
Yeah, well, the, the projects done there, yeah, we'd have the hearing in April, that's when the invoice would be generated. And then they have the choice of paying it in full, or depending on the amount of the special assessments, it would be put on a five, 10, or 15-year payment plan that's put on the tax roll each year.
Okay, so if, Matt, you're talking about not billing those out for next year? That the, the hearing would be in April for those? Is that what you're saying? And then, so if we don't bill for that and the work's already been done, where is that money coming from? I guess that's where I'm...
Well, the, the projects were already funded in this year's budget. So, the special assessment revenue is, is a general fund revenue that offsets the tax levy. So when that revenue goes away, then obviously, that would, you know, if it doesn't, if it isn't there to offset the tax levy and the general fund, then you would have to have either an alternative funding source to make up that gap, or a reduction in expenditures to balance the budget for that loss of revenue.
And so if we did that, then next, for the 2022 budget, you're saying, or 2023, that it would, that we would be short, and we'd have to figure out where to get that extra 450,000?
Right. I guess it all depends on, by eliminating special assessments, what that means, because you have existing ones that people are paying on, and then you have the future ones that have yet to be billed. And depending on when those, because I've said in previous meetings, like, special assessments, it's recognized as revenue when it's actually collected, not when it's billed.
But is the money accrued into the budget at this point?
What was that?
Is the money accrued into the budget at this point, you said? The 500, the $500,000 for the special assessments that are being reduced or accrued into this budget?
Right. What's in the 2022?
But it hasn't changed the levy by pulling them off.
Right. What's in the 2022 budget is the amount that we'll be placing on the tax roll, the 2021 tax roll payable in 2022, plus then I usually estimate that, you know, we have projects in that would be built out next year, and there's a certain percentage, you know, depending on, it varies, that people will pay it up right away, and then that's recognized as revenue, so that's how I come up with my special assessment revenue. So, so part of what's in the budget is what's gonna go on the tax roll for existing special assessments, and then an estimate based on projects done this year that will be invoiced next year, the amount that people paid upfront in full in 2022. And then the balance of what isn't paid on those is then put on the tax roll on the payment plan.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Jake.
Yeah, I would just go back to the series of Finance and Property Committee meetings that we had, going over each department budget, and I understand this did come later in the year, but I, I don't know how many we had or how many hours we sat there, but this was not brought then, and I don't feel comfortable generally just saying, 500,000, no clue where it's at or coming from this late in the game. I do think there was enough time here, even since last week, if, if this was the direction we wanted to head, that we could've combed through it, or whoever wants, had, if you wanna do this, you could look at the line items, decided what the city doesn't need, because we went through the line items, and that's har, that's harder to do than just to say, this department doesn't need this, this department doesn't need this. So, I'm not in favor of just the general 500,000. I, I do think we're on a path to see special assessments go away, and I do support that with the transportation utility, but I can't support this at the end of the year, not the full 500,000, unless we can talk about exactly where we're gonna take it from.
Good, Matt.
Again, I kinda look at it like, I did, I sat in on as many as time would allow me to sit in on them, and, and I listened to what they're saying, and everybody, there's, there's what you need, and then there's what you want, but I don't necessarily know. I can read it over, I can listen to them all day long, I don't know what the, the difference is between the need and the want. Only they know that, and only they're gonna be able to set up a budget that is within a, a budgeted parameter that is given to them by, I, I guess, us as the council, and as the mayor, and as the, the accountant that says, this is, this is how much each department has to work with, because this is all the money we're making. We have 40 million, we're gonna fit everything that we need to do, and we're gonna put roads at the front end, not at the back end, and we're going, and this is your budget, this is what you have to work with. So figure out how to do that. Again, I, I know it's late in the game, but I don't know when else to say it. I, I, you know, I don't, I, I was here, like you said, for the last couple months, trying to figure things out and where to go, and in the end, we came up $2 million short, so I feel like we should keep working on it. You know?
And I don't disagree on the we should keep working on it part. I would just state that when we went through the budget, we didn't approve any new large projects, any purchases that weren't necessary, and I think all the department heads did a great job at, at putting their budgets together and having us look over them. So, I think tonight, we could make progress towards that, but again, I don't know if, if we just say the 500,000. I mean, we picked out some things last week, we have some folks from the library here to discuss that, but I think if we're gonna make a motion or approve that moving forward with 500,000, turning down that revenue and then making it up from reducing expenses, we gotta know where those expenses are.
So we already have a motion and a second on the floor. Patrick?
I attended almost all these meetings, and when we're, okay, never was it a full general council until Thursday, and that's the only time that we could really make a motion and say, hey, this is what we would like to see. Also, it's the first time that I had seen that we had been $2 million short, was when we got the budget on, for Thursday's council meeting. So, I don't think this is late in the game, I think this is the time to do it, and just pushing through a budget that is $2 million short, I don't think is responsible. And I don't know anybody else that would feel that that is responsible to do that, just because it's later in the game. I don't know whose fault it is why this is coming out so late, don't know whose fault it is that we didn't get a budget that says, hey, we're gonna be $2 million short, you know? I think that would've been nice to know during our meetings that we had, right? Like, once did that been nice? Hey, everybody, we're gonna have to take out a loan for $2 million. I, I think that would've been nice to know back at, in October, when we first got the, the first budget. All the budget meetings that we had were just based on expense, nothing was based on income, until Thursday's meeting.
Good, Jake.
Tim, when's the first time you sent out the budget draft?
The department budgets went out October 5th, and then the budget summary that had all the revenues, expenditures, was sent out on October 14th, and then that was updated, and there was very minimal changes, was sent out Tuesday, the two days before the public hearing, but it was basically the same document as, as the 14th, just some very minor changes. You know, and, and, you know, just, just for clarification, I think it's just verbiage, but, you know, when we're referring to the $2 million short, that has to do with the $2 million of proposed debt to fund the, the street construction project. So just, if it's one to clarify, because as I said at the last thing, that, you know, debt proceeds are considered revenue that fund the projects i- in the year, in, in the budget, so I just wanna say, you know, that, that's really what's being discussed, is the $2 million of proposed debt. Am I correct on that? For the street construction projects?
I, I just, I just wanna... That was my assumption, is that it's referring to...
Yeah, I just just wanna clarify that it's, it's the $2 million of debt that proposed is what we're talking about when we talk about $2 million short. I just wanna just make sure that we're on.
Yeah.
I never received anything on the 14th.
Go ahead, Matt.
I think from my understanding is, this is what I hear a lot of, is just, this is just the way we've always done it. And, and I, I understand that, if nobody's ever said we should, we should keep a budget within what our revenue is, because only, to me, only then can we start to get ahead of the game. And I realize we can only, you know, I know there's parameters we can do with the city budget and all, but when it's government, I'm not sure what the regulations are for it. But if we can stop taking out that, stop going into debt further and further, I think then we can get to the point where we could actually start to have a surplus in order to be ready for fire station improvements and city garage improvements and central roof improvements and stuff like that. Because right now, it just immediately goes towards, where does the money come from? And chances are good, it's gone, so we have to take out more debt in order to fund those big projects. And I think we need to get to the point where we're out of debt and we're moving towards a surplus. Thank you.
Good, Jerry.
I just have a question. So, is, is, was the motion just to simply adopt the tax levy right now? Because that wouldn't change anyways, we're not gonna lower that. Right? I mean, you wouldn't lower the tax levy, right? So all we're doing is just adopting that per se, right? I mean, it's not...
Yes. So it was to drop, it, it's to adopt the levy and then reduce, uh, let me find it, reduce the budget by $500,000?
Yeah, because, and, we're on B, right? Consider for adoption a resolution adopting the tax levy?
Correct.
Okay, and the 2022 revenue budget.
Tim, did you have your hand up? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Dean.
Um, Tim, actually, I know Matt said something, this, just the way it's always been done. What, is there a reason why we start doing the budget in October? Is, could, what, what's involved? I'm just, to explain to myself and...
Sure, department heads...
What's involved in how long the department needs?
Department heads usually, you know, in July and August are developing the departmental budgets, and then in September, I'm compiling all that information, reviewing it, getting estimates, you know, the revenue side, and then also, we're meeting internally, because it is an executive budget where the mayor's meeting with, certain department has to review their budgets, and then once that is complete, I put the, the department budget together, and then that's when it comes to the, the finance committee.
Okay. Because in, first of all, I agree with, oh, Mr. Austin started this, I think to bombard the library at this late notice in the game, I agree with Mr. Buran, and, and I'm looking at long-term. So in my mind, this is really about moving forward next year and not letting this kind of thing happen. Start thinking about the budget earlier. Is there a reason why, say you say they start in July and, July and August, is there a reason why they, the department heads could start in May and June?
Right. And I, you know, I've actually, it was just based on the, you know, the conversations, you know, and the budget's been done a variety of different ways throughout, throughout the years, and it's really up to the discretion of what, what the council feels comfortable with, what, what the process is. It doesn't mean it's because we did it this way this year or the last year that it can't change, because we have done it different ways. And one of the things that, you know, we can have a discussion on, you know, with the, through the finance committee and ultimately the council or committee, the whole, however, you know, the, this body wants to do it, is, is like you say, okay, how can we change the budget process so that members outside the finance committee maybe have more input or can, you know, can make motions or suggestions on, you know, changes to the budget and, and things like that? And that definitely can, you know, we can accomplish that. I mean, it's just a matter of, okay, let's refine the budget process, the timeline that everyone can agree on, and then we can, you know, implement that, and, you know, and hopefully that improves the process for, for this council.
For me, it's just a, it's a matter of, I have absolutely no desire as, as a council person to micromanage budget items, but I do feel, I've heard of $800 chairs, and, and, and I'm, one of the things I've learned in the short time I've been in this position is how few bids we do on certain things. And I just think, to be more fiscally responsible, to give the department heads the opportunities to get more than one, one or two bids for an office furniture project, those kind of things. I just think we need to be able to find it, and that's why, yeah, is in this late motion, in this late minute, we're, are we gonna be able to find $500,000 tonight or before, quickly? No, I understand that. But moving forward, trying to, to get a little bit more fiscally responsible so that we're not borrowing pay for the roads. And that's kind of the way I'm at, and I kind of believe that Mr. Zachar's leaning in that direction as well, I would think, trying to just get a little bit more fiscally responsible. That's my thoughts.
Good.
Yeah, and I'll just say, as, being on the finance committee, is that if, if the one you're referring to, the $800 chair was addressed at one of our meetings, and I do believe that was Public Works Engineering Department, I do believe, and that was explained the reason why to go with that amount of money. So when somebody throws out $800 and they hear about that, wow, it's a lot of money, it is. But the reason for that was given, and that's what then is missed to the general public. And that's why I raised that tonight, because people hear $800 and they think, whoa, I don't have a chair like that in my office at home, but there's a reason for it, and that reason was given for that. Now, I've sat through 25 or 26 of these, and it has been done, many different ways. And I've sat here on a night like this, when people have tried to pull out a $500, a $10,000 rate. Is it late in the game? Yeah. Is there a different way to do it? Yeah. It's part of the process, and this is what the process is. To take $500,000 or $800,000, in the case that's the library, but if it's just coming out of the budget, are we all agreeing not to do something with that $500,000 somewhere? That's what we have to determine. What I'm hearing is, because the projects that we do, we need an extra couple million dollars. What I don't hear is where you're taking the couple, hit, couple million dollars out of those projects, or nickel and dime whatever other ones to get it. We can sit here, I'm for it. I remember a few years back, we went after, or someone after how much remodeling was done on the upstairs and furniture. It seems to say we wanna balance the budget, and everybody would, I think. But until somebody comes up with that magic way, without saying what to get rid of, and oh, I'm hearing some numbers, so I'm not saying that, people aren't saying that, not, that nobody's not saying. That is what has to be done. What do you want to cut? Does the $2 million or whatever comes from the, what we have to borrow, the street department? Now, which one of those projects doesn't, that, don't people want? So I'm, I'm, I'm willing to listen. There weren't, through the process of the... There weren't, through the process of the number of meetings that we had, five or six, I think, there weren't many changes that were made, listening to the departments that came in. I believe the committee felt that, listening to that and hearing the explanation, that what they were asking for was legit, and so the process moved forward, and it got to the meeting of last week on Thursday at public hearing, and now we're here tonight. Did it move slower than normal? I don't know. It's been done in many different ways, as Tim has said. So it's, uh, it's, uh, we're here tonight, and it's up to eight of us to decide what And I'll just say, or ask Tim, what's the deadline for this, the date?
Well, the tax levy has to be adopted, obviously, you know, before December 1st, because that's when we have to get, you know, that information over to the county. As far as any general budget reductions, you know, obviously it would be something that would have to be done in, you know, on a timely basis. It doesn't have to be done by the first, because if, if you're adopting a tax levy, we would be, you know, then I guess the, the direct directive to staff would be, you know, come up with $500,000 of reductions and bring it forward in a, you know, a budget amendment. And obviously, you want to get that done as soon as possible before you start the fiscal year and start incurring some of those expenditures, and especially, you want to know where those reductions that occur so that, you know, you get into the new budget year, you're not, you know, obviously expending those funds which you anticipate to cut.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, we do have a motion on the floor. Go ahead, Sue.
I guess I just have a question. So it seems like your recommendation would be to adopt the levy and the budget as presented with the direction to come up with $500,000, and that would be a budget amendment that would come back, so, but they would still adopt what's here right now? You wouldn't take the $500,000 out of the budget as it stands?
Well, yeah, because we, I mean, theoretically, we don't know where those are going to occur. So basically, what it would be is adopt the $20, the tax levy and the budget with, you know, the caveat that a budget amendment would be brought forward, reducing that, that budget with the specific areas of where those reductions would occur.
Right, so we're not changing the budget tonight? We're, we would be adopting this.
Right, but with the overlying that...
I just wanted to be clear on, I thought we were, we were going to start, you know, marking it out. I mean, not that you can't do that, but...
Right, exactly. But I'm understanding with what the, the intent of the motion was, is not specifically identify those areas tonight, correct? Right.
Okay. And, and just regarding special assessments and so on, you know, we can't, just, the action taken isn't automatically going to change our ordinances or change our policies or waive fees that people are paying, so obviously there, there's some follow-up that needs to be done on, on those things probably as part of, of the budget amendment process. But, okay, thank you.
So does anything have to be changed in the motion then? Using some kind of amendment language?
Well, yeah.
Go ahead, Tim. All right. Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it, it does bring to the question of like, you know, what I was saying before about the special assessments is, is what are we going to change about the special assessments? It's, you know, obviously Sue had mentioned that, you know, changing the ordinance, but what about existing special assessments, you know, as opposed to future special assessments? And when those revenues are recognized, and when those expenditure reductions have to occur? So it's, you know, it can be a little bit complex when you, when you're using it to offset the special assessment revenue, because some of that has already been billed out and is going to be going on the tax roll. And that decision would actually have to be made before December 1st, because that's some of the information that goes on the, the tax roll. So now that I'm thinking about this more, is that, you know, the installments that we existently have are, have to be to the county by December 1st also, so, not the muddy the waters a little bit, but, you know, special assessments, just replacing special assessments, it's not as simple as, it's a little bit more complicated in what you're going to do with the existing as opposed to future.
Is that it? Your question?
Uh, yes. We have to take a vote on my motion before we actually vote on the budget, and would that benefit us to do that before we continue with this conversation?
But didn't you say that we had to motion to, to do the budget as it is right now, right? Is that what you just said?
I guess I said that would probably be the recommend, recommendation unless you were going to decide where, you know, you're going to change this, these numbers to reflect the $500,000. So, and I, I mean, whether you want to go through that exercise or not, but was the motion to actually adopt the levy and the budget with that $500,000, is that, or you were just making a motion to amend the budget by $500,000?
Right. Right. It was a little more complicated. I think maybe if we dispose of this motion, or they can withdraw them.
Or we can vote.
Yeah, we can vote or you can withdraw. It's up to you. No, we got a motion in a second on the floor, why don't we vote on it?
I'd say let's vote.
So the motion I have is to reduce the budget by $500,000 to cover the costs of Along with the...
But then we would have to change that in there right now, right? I mean, is that what you're saying, Sue or Tim, that if, if we, if we do that, then we have to go through and figure out where that $500,000 is coming out, right?
I would think so, because it wouldn't be balanced, right?
Right. Yeah, I mean, and, and also, you know, I keep going back to special assessments is, when you say reduce or replace special assessments, you know, the amount that you're reducing the revenue by, and, you know, the special assessments revenue in this budget isn't exactly $500,000, it's, it's less than that, but, you know, if you're looking at for future, you know, specials, because it does vary depending on the amount of projects we do. So, you know, really, and keep going back to this, you know, when you say reduce or replace special assessments, are you, are you talking about all current ones and future? Or, you know, and I'm not sure, you know, what the ordinance speaks to once, you know, they've been, you know, acted upon and billed, you know, are you then voiding all the rest of those balances on those invoices? And, you know, what about the people that paid theirs off this year? You know, you know, it's, it can be a little bit complicated when you're just referring to just replacing special assessments.
It would be the same thing as if we were to adopt the transportation utility. That was the plan. So do we have a plan in place for the transportation utility and how we're going to do it?
I do believe with existing special assessments is that they would be, continue to be put on the tax roll, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but then they would get a credit on the transportation utility fee, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
So that was the plan for existing special assessments.
I would be in favor of doing it the same way. That's just me.
Go ahead, Sherri.
But that was, what's being billed out now is for 2020, right? Because the hearing was just this April for work that...
Right, we already billed those out, and some have paid them, and the ones that didn't pay off the invoice, it's, the first installment will be going on their tax bill this year.
The tax bill for 2021.
Right.
So if Matt was saying that eliminate special assessments, those would be for the ones that would be, that have not been billed out yet for two, that would have the hearing in 2020?
Two.
Two.
Two, yep.
Yeah, April.
So those would be the ones that aren't, that haven't been billed or haven't, because the hearing hasn't taken place, so it's not revenue yet.
Correct. Right. And then if it's just for the future ones, then the ones that were actually invoiced now will still be recognizing that revenue in the, in the, in the 2022 budget. So, you know, if you're talking about finding budget reductions to, you know, eliminate special assessments, and I'm just, this is just because of the timing of everything, it doesn't necessarily mean that those reductions would be in the 2022 budget, because a lot of that revenue won't be recognized or billed out till 2022, collectible in '23. You know what I'm saying there? So, you know, that's why it's kind of a little bit complicated on what the amount of reductions would be in each of the budget years to eliminate those future special assessments with, offset with expenditure reduction.
And so it, it, it's very intricate, and I, and I, I don't even want to say, I begin to understand like you do, but making a motion just to simply say, we're going to reduce it by $450,000, we'd have to know, okay, who is paid, who has not paid, and are they going to get that back? I mean, it, it's, it's kind of a really lengthy... Okay.
So we still have this motion on the floor.
Can you repeat the motion again? Now it's confusion.
Well, I have, the motion is to reduce the budget by $500,000 to cover special assessments. Is that what you had written down also, Sue? Or something similar?
Which, when...
But isn't that leaving it wide o, I mean, it, there, there's nothing saying what special, I mean, how you want to do the special assessment, so I, I don't know how we could vote on that because we don't even know.
Wouldn't we, not to change your, Matt's motion, but wouldn't we want to reduce it by the special assessments that are in that budget? You said it was less than $500,000, so wouldn't...
Right.
I remember 337 or something like that, seems like the number.
Yeah, that's, it's, yeah.
Do you follow what I mean? I'm not trying to tell you to change your motion, I'm just saying, but to make that, to make that, to answer Sherri's question, to make sense, it would seem like if we're reducing a budget, it would be to reduce that budget. So it would be to, the motion would be to reduce it by 337,000, or whatever that number is.
Right.
But then you'd still have to decide...
Go ahead, Sherri.
No, I'm sorry, you just, but I just wanted to say, so we'd still have to decide though, like if the people have already paid, how they're going to get, right? Okay.
Right, because, yeah, you're getting, if you paid it off, you're getting penalized if you would have been better off to wait for an installment, then you wouldn't have had to pay anything, right?
So you'd have to figure, shouldn't that have to be in the motion as well of how you're going to do that? Sue?
Well, I, I would say that this, it would need to be done by ordinance, not by budgetary motion. So, because there's, right, it, there's, I mean, the, the revenue that's in the budget for special assessments, that's for projects that have been, are at least probably two years old, right, or...
Right, those are, the majority of it is installments, but then I just still do an estimate of, you know, ones that we would have billed in 2022, that there's a certain percentage of people that will pay off the special assessment right away, and so that's reckoned as revenue, so I try to incorporate that into my revenue projections for the budget. So it's a combination.
So we still have a motion in a second on the floor, which is, I think, incomplete.
What I'm hearing is, there's two different things. The money, it's an ordinance, it's the ordinance that's getting for the special assessment, and that can't be changed today. The 350, 400, 450, 500,000 in special assessments, which is what I'm talking about, is what we're going to burden the taxpayers with that have already paid their taxes for the roads they're getting, they're getting charged again, an exorbitant amount of money now, whatever happened over the last couple of years, just costs, I guess, have skyrocketed. So, so my point is, how do we unburden the taxpayers of that special assessment? And if we can't do it right now, then you, if you need me to withdraw it so that we can finish with the budget, I can do that. But I'm going to, we got to continue up on it. We got to take that burden off the taxpayers.
Joe, do you have a thought?
I think one of the complications here is, is, is staff, we're talking kind of apples and oranges to what your impression is. The revenues in the budget are for special assessments that have been in place for a long time, some of them 10 years. When you're talking about relief, like the transportation, the proposed transportation utility has, that's for future special assessments. So of that $2 million that is proposed to be borrowed, that includes what the city would charge out in special assessment, say it's $500,000 for next year's projects. The revenue for that would come in over the next one, five, 10, or 15 years. So the budgeted income is not the same as the ordinance for future special assessments. It's, it's two very different things. Does it, does that make sense? Does that help at all?
It does, and my mind is following it to some degree. What, and correct me if I'm wrong, what I, did I just understand that we actually take out the special assessment money in a loan, so the taxpayers are paying interest on that money, and then at the same time being charged at the special assessment on top of the interest they're paying? So they're kind of getting triple whammy. They pay their taxes, they pay the debt, or the interest on the debt, and then they also pay a special assessment.
The, the special assessment includes the interest. They're, they're paying the interest when they make their special assessment payment. So, so those that have special assess, the balance though, right, I mean, that's, that's a small portion of the total that's being borrowed. What did we figure, about $260,000 in total interest and bond cost annually? So there, there are costs that the taxpayers are paying, but those that are paying special assessments, the interest that's accruing, they're paying for that if they choose to pay in installments.
Right. So on top of the taxes they're paying, special assessment they're paying, they're getting their levies up because we're paying more interest, and then if they can't afford to pay it off, then they're paying again on the interest on the loan that they needed to take out for their special assessment. I guess that's what I'm just saying, is, is, you know, if I need to withdraw this motion right now, I, I'm assuming the point's being shown that the residents are paying and paying and paying, and I guess that's what I'm trying to get at, and that's, that's what I'm going to work on fixing, I guess, as much as I can.
Right. I mean, I can understand where you come from, is basically your ultimate goal is, is that you, you want to just end the practice of special assess, specially assessing for projects, correct?
Yeah, and taking out loans continuously over and over so that we're burdened with...
Right, so your, your ultimate goal is that you want to eliminate any borrowing for any capital street-type projects or any projects whatsoever?
That would be anybody, I would hope, yeah.
No, I'm just, and, you know, and then obviously eliminating special assessments. Okay. Just want to make sure I understand.
So at this point, is it better for me to withdraw my motion? Not that I want to make a habit out of doing this, but I will if it makes us be able to move forward here, because it's...
It could be cleaner, I guess. Oh, yeah, that's true, the motion does belong to the body. So is it, yeah, so I guess if we look at your interest or would be willing to do unanimous consent to withdraw the motion, is there any objections? So we, we have an objection, so we'll vote on the motion, and vote it up or down, and then we'll go forward from there. So yet, so the motion is, so the vote you're doing is on withdrawing the motion?
Correct. Or... Or?
Just vote on the motion, be done with it. Okay. So let's vote on the motion and just be done with it. Okay, everybody understand?
So we're voting on the motion to reduce it by 500,000 for special assessments.
Correct. All right. Ryan?
No.
Dean?
No.
Uh, Matt?
So I didn't withdraw my motion, right?
Nope, so we're voting on the motion.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, Tom?
I voted yes.
Okay. And Sherri?
No.
Jake?
No.
And Patrick?
Yes.
And Jay?
No.
Okay, so that motion failed. Six, well, two As and six NAs. So we're at, back to a clean slate. What are your wishes? Go ahead, Ryan.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a resolution adopting the tax levy in 2022 City of Wisconsin Rapids budget.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to adopt the, let me make sure I get it right. The tax levy and the 2022 budget. Correct? Okay. Let me get, make sure I get it written down here. Any discussion on that?
So this, this wouldn't change any of the department budgets, wouldn't change any of the library budgets, wouldn't change anything at all? Is that what the motion is?
That's correct. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none. Ryan?
Aye.
Uh, Dean? Matt?
No.
Tom? Sherri?
Aye.
Jake?
No.
Uh, Patrick?
No.
And Jay?
Aye.
So. So that motion carried five As to three NAs. So. We can move on to item 6C. So I should probably answer most of the audience's questions. Um, 6C is, maybe if this is the time you want to sneak out, it'd be a good time? Before we get going on the next thing? You don't have to though. Okay, let's move on to item number 6C, which is consider for adoption a resolution setting the equivalent residential unit ERU charge for the stormwater management utility improvement fund. See attachment six. Tim or Joe? Tim?
Sure, uh, you know, we had, saw some increases in the, the stormwater operating budgets, mainly the street sweeping, storm sewer maintenance. Uh, the fee was, uh, created many years ago to pay for, uh, stormwater utility type activities such as street sweeping, sewer maintenance, storm sewer construction. We saw an increase in the street sweeping budget of nearly $60,000. That's because that the landfill now start charging us, uh, for our street sweepings. As before, we weren't charged. It was kind of a, a barter system where they didn't charge us for the street sweepings, and then we provide road base. Well, now this, um, well, this agreement or, or will no longer exist. So now we estimate that we'll have to pay an additional $60,000 for those street sweepings, which necessitated the, the increase in the utility fee so we can keep that fee, kind of keep pace with the operating accounts. And also that fee generates approximately $250,000. That's used to fund storm sewer construction and offset the amount that we need to borrow for those projects.
Thank you, Tim. Any questions, comments on the resolution? Sherri?
I know it has to be done, I, I get it. I just, it just worries me, just like if we do the transportation utility, because we said it, that it's going to be this, and then every year it's going up and, up and up. And I mean, I know we're all citizens of the city. I don't like paying anymore. I mean, I, I get it. But it's, it's just something that I always worry about because it, it, once, once you set something in place, it can keep going up and up and up and up and up. And I mean, I look at my utility bills in the summer and it's just, I mean, I know a lot of people have left the city because they can't afford it anymore. Yes, we have great services, but it's just a part where they can't afford it anymore. But just my two cents, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? What are your wishes?
Make a motion to approve?
Oh, yeah, well, motion to approve. Where we second, that was Tom? Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Uh, Ryan?
Aye.
Dean? Uh, Matt?
Aye.
Tom? Sherri?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
Patrick?
No.
Jay?
Aye.
So that motion carries seven As to one Ne. Okay, we are, oh, we had a public hearing. We are on to a public hearing on the discontinuance of a portion of Avon Street. So I'll call three times for the public to speak in favor or against the discontinuation, and then council can have a discussion. So I'll call for the first time to speak against discontinuing Avon Street. Is there anybody, just raise your hand? I'll call for a second time to discontinue. And for a third time, anybody wish to speak against? Okay, seeing none. Does anybody wish to speak in favor of the discontinuance? For a second time, does anybody wish to speak in favor? And lastly, does anybody wish to speak in favor of the discontinuance of Avon Street? Seeing none, we can close the public hearing. Didn't write the start time, but the ending time with 7:33 is probably 7:32. Okay. We can move on to item A to consider a resolution to discontinue the portion of Avon Street. What are your wishes?
Motion to approve.
A motion by Sherri, and who's second in it? Ryan? Thank you. Sometimes the buttons are nice. So any further discussion, comments, questions?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Jake.
Can someone just speak to this? I can't find a map or where we're discontinuing.
Is this by the sheriff's department there?
Oh, okay, thank you.
By the courthouse. All right. Any further discussion? Great, seeing none. Uh, Ryan?
Aye.
Dean? Matt? Tom? Sherri?
Aye.
Uh, Jake?
Aye.
And Patrick?
Aye.
And Jay?
Aye.
That motion carried eight As, zero NAs. No, they're out the rest of our galley. Thank you. All right, so we are on to now, other ni, item nine, the second reading of the ordinance creating sections 6.2, parent two, parent D, and parent E, and parent F of the municipal code regarding driveway approaches.
Go ahead, Sherri.
So I see we have, okay, there's two attachments. One was the original and the second was the amendment, if I'm correct, right, Sue?
Right. The, there was the original that was, that was the first reading last month. But then there was an, an amendment made to that, um, uh, to add a, I think section F it was. But that, that was just the first reading, it wasn't unanimous. So I, we put both in, um, and I guess, you know, determining, you can choose which one you want to proceed with, but the, the one was the original one, uh, that did not have the grandfathering in, and then the second one has the grandfathering in. So I guess just a motion to, on whichever one you want to proceed with.
And the first one was what was recommended by Public Works, correct? Or Engineering? Was it Joe?
Yes.
Bigstead, I think, maybe? Is that right?
What are your wishes?
And so how do we make a motion?
Right, I guess.
If I want the first one or the, or the, are you going to do it in two separate, or?
No, I think someone can make a motion on, on, uh, adapting whether the one with just D and E or the one with the E and F. So we'll make it clear in the motion which one it is that you want adapted.
I'd make a motion to approve, um, the ordinance, um, the original with just D and E.
It's been a motion by Sherri, second by Jake. The first ordinance. Any discussion on that motion? Go ahead, Joe.
Just a quick clarification, I think D, I think the "and" stamped was in the original one that was brought to Public Works. And item E covers the "and" stamped part. So I think, I think D should just be colored. Concrete is not allowed within the driveway approach or sidewalk section within the right of way. And E is correct as, as written. That's correct. When it was originally brought forward, it was all included in, in one. But the committee recommended segregating that into a couple of, of parts. And I, and I think I just forgot the, um, the "and" stamped part when we segregated it.
So I would make a, um.
You'd amend your motion.
Amend my motion, um, to read D colored. Concrete is not allowed within the driveway approach or sidewalk section within the right of way. E stamped concrete is not allowed within the driveway approach or sidewalk section within the public right of way.
Go with that, Jake? Go with, okay. Go ahead, Matt.
So if we don't vote, if this motion doesn't go through, we can then make another motion to accept?
Okay, yes. Go ahead, Patrick.
Does this have to be a? Majority?
Majority.
Wasn't it a majority last time? It was a majority. These three didn't.
Yes. Well, you need, if it's not unanimous, then you need a second reading. So if you, so if you vote on an ordinance unanimous, you'll need to have a second reading. But if you vote on an ordinance and it's not unanimous, then you have to have the second reading. So basically, the first reading is a practice run.
So does this have to be unanimous?
No.
Because it's different.
No.
Than the last time.
It's by majority, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, right, no, this, this ordinance, well, the basic ordinance was before, before the council. So I, I would say this is the second reading of this ordinance. Everybody understands that it's colored concrete and stamped concrete. There was an issue of whether certain ones would be grandfathered or not. It was voted on first time, it was not unanimous. Now it's coming back for a second reading.
Can we, can we change what we're voting on like we just did? Or do we have to vote on what we voted on before? Because what we voted on before included F.
I guess, I guess that's why I put both of, both of them in there. I guess if a majority of you chooses, if the motion is to adopt one, one way, I guess, and it passes a majority, then I'm assuming that the majority wants that one. I guess if you'd rather take the other one first, I, I mean, this is, the motion was made to accept the one with, obviously, there was a change now because I had put stamped concrete in twice, but I don't think that changes the.
So there's a motion by me.
And the second by Jake, nope.
So.
We will vote on that motion. And should, whatever happens, then we can discuss another motion or we move on. Okay, everybody understand? Uh, oh, wait a minute. No. All right, Ryan?
No.
Dean? Matt?
No.
Tom? Uh, Sherri?
Aye.
Uh, Jake?
Aye.
Patrick?
No.
Jay? So that motion was defeated by three As and five, five NAs.
Oh, neither one. I'll make a motion to approve the, the next one, the A, the D, E, and F version.
I'll second that.
Just a quick question, would it have to be changed again, Sue? Because it says colored and stamped, like Joe kind of referred, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
With the, with the typo change.
Yeah.
I had this many pages of notes, even when it was clerk. Okay, Ryan?
Aye.
I'm sorry. I forgot to ask if anybody wanted discussion?
Nope, I think it's just fine as it's presented.
Go ahead, Matt.
Kind of stuck in my head, Joe, you said that we didn't want the colored or stamped concrete at the, that part of the driveway for safety reasons? But I don't know if I ever asked what the safety, like what the safety hazards would be there.
Um, in, in sidewalks especially, um, we don't want colored and stamped because of the, um, the texture for, for a sidewalk. If someone wants to do some landscaping in their front yard, a patio, things like that, that's up to them. Um, but in the actual sidewalk section, we don't want that stamped part. The colored part is for consistency and, um, somewhat ease of administration because some colors are reserved for street signs, um, things like that, and can't be used in the right of way without the potential for the city facing some problems if something did happen. So it's, it's a reduction of liability. If there's a, a situation where, um, the city needs to make a repair, if it's something caused by utility or the city or whatever, matching that again becomes really difficult. And this is really a clarification, our current ordinance doesn't allow it, but it's a bit convoluted. People don't just understand it, so they, they look for a detailed explanation and don't necessarily, um, agree with the engineer's interpretation. Sometimes people think, well, it doesn't say I can't, so that means I can. But the existing ordinance lists how the concrete mixture can be, and it doesn't include, you know, colored and, obviously, the stamped texture is a problem. So that's, that's the rationale behind it, to keep things consistent out in the right of way. People can do what they want on their own, on their own property, but it's just what's in the public right of way.
Any further questions? All right, seeing none, Ryan?
Aye.
Uh, Dean?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Tom? That was a week. Okay. And Sherri?
No.
Jake?
Aye.
Uh, Patrick?
Aye.
And Jay?
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries six As to two NAs. Did I miss the Ne? Oh, I'm sorry, I missed the Ne, sorry. Did I miss the N? Oh, I'm sorry. I missed the N. Sorry. Yeah, that's why we're teaming it in three Ns. Can't read my writing. Okay, we are on to Item 10. Is considered the, considered for adoption the action of the planning commission at its meeting held on November 1st. I'll read that. The planning commission met at 4:00 PM on November 1st in Wisconsin Rapids Council Chambers. The meeting was called to order at 4:00 PM. It was moved and seconded to adopt the minutes of the previous reports on October 4th and October 19th. Item 2 was the County of Wood to, they requested discontinuation of Avon Street. There was a motion and a second to approve that request, and that motion carried. Item 3 was Plan 21-0128. It was Love Inc. of Southwood County. They had requested for a site plan, a review of a plan site improvements at 710 20th Avenue South. It was moved and seconded to approve that request along with staff conditions. That motion carried five As to zero Ns. Item 4 was Plan 21-01028. David Reynolds, representing Charter Communication, they were requesting a site plan review to construct an accessory building at 2140 8th Street South. That was moved and seconded to approve along with staff recommendations. That motion carried five As, zero Ns. Item 5 was adjournment, which carried five As, zero Ns, and had a meeting adjourned at 4:15 PM. And what are your wishes?
I'll move to approve, approve the planning commission minutes.
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Jay, seconded by Ryan. Um, any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Ryan?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Sherri?
Aye.
Thank you. And Jake?
Aye.
And Patrick?
Aye.
And Jay?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. That motion carried eight As, zero Ns. We are on to Item 11. Consider for adoption the action of standing committees of the common council as follows. Item A, Finance and Property Committee, meeting held on October 26th. Mr. Rehm?
Thank you, Honored. Finance and Property Committee met at 4:30 PM on Tuesday, October 26th, 2021, in the council chambers at City Hall. All members of the Finance and Property Committee were present. Also, attendants were Alderson Veneman, Zachar, Mayor Blazer, Police Chief Blevin, Interim Fire Chief Ekis, and Tim DeSorci. Item 1, call meeting to order. Chairperson Rehm called the meeting to order at 4:34 PM. Item 2, review and discuss the 2022 budget with emphasis on public safety. Police Chief Blevins presented and reviewed the 2022 Police Department Budget, and Interim Fire Chief Ekis presented and reviewed the 2022 Fire Department Budget with the committee. No action was taken. Three, the committee may vote to go into closed session under Section 19.85, Pern 1, Pern E of the Wisconsin statutes, which reads, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. In closed session, the committee will, A, discuss negotiations and strategy regarding intergovernmental agreements with municipalities for the provision of ambulance services to those municipalities; B, discuss emergency medical services, billings, services, contracts. The committee will adjourn in closed session. It's moved by Bemke, seconded by Katnaugh, to go into closed session. Roll call voted in the affirmative. The committee discussed the above referenced items, and no action was taken. The committee adjourned in closed session. With that, just go to the next report.
Yeah, if you, I think if we can probably take them in both, I would think all these budgets, if you want to take them in both, that'd be fine.
The next one, Finance and Property Committee met at 4:30 PM on Thursday, October 28th, 2021, in the council chambers of City Hall. All members of Finance and Property Committee were present. Also, attendants were Alderson Veneman, Alderson Zachar, Alderson Delaney, Mayor Blazer, Joe Terry, Joe Agstead, Paul Volokh, Jake Klinkforth, and Tim DeSorci. Item 1, call the meeting to order. Chairperson Rehm called the meeting to order. To order at 4:33 PM. Item 2, review and discuss the 2022 budget with emphasis on Public Works. Public Works staff presented and reviewed applicable sections of the 2022 Public Works budget. No action was taken. Item 3 adjourned. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Katnaugh, to adjourn. Motion carried, and the meeting adjourned at 5:39 PM. And with that, the next one is Finance and Property Committee met at 4:30 PM on Tuesday, November 2nd, 2021, in the council chambers at City Hall. Meeting was live. Let me skip that, I guess. All members of Finance and Property Committee were present. Also, attendants were Alderson Zachar, Alderson Delaney, Kyle Kearns, and Tim DeSorci. A list of others in attendance is on file in the clerk's office. Item 1, to call the meeting to order. Chairperson Rehm called the meeting to order at 4:31 PM. Item 2, consider for approval of renewal application from ECO ATM Hunter Borkman for a second-hand Article Dealer License for the premise located at 4331 8th Street South. It's moved by Katnaugh, seconded by Bemke, to approve the renewal application for ECO ATM Hunter Borkman for a second-hand Article D Dealer License for the premise located at 4331 8th Street South. Motion carried. Item 3, 2022 Water Works and Lighting Commission Budget Review. Jeff Coon and Jim Brown were, presented the 2022 Water Works and Lighting Budget. It's moved by Bemke, seconded by Rehm, to approve the 2022 Water Works and Lighting Commission Budget. Motion carried. Item 4, audit the bills. It's moved by Katnaugh, seconded by Bemke, to approve check numbers 9972 to 10098. And that motion carried. Item 5, set the next meeting date, the next regular meeting of the Finance and Property Committee. The regular meeting is on Tuesday, December 7th, 2021, at 4:30 PM. Number 6, review and approve the commercial listing contract for the vacant city-owned building located at 161 and 163 3rd Street North. Parcel IDs 34-08156 and 34-08157. It was moved by Katnaugh, seconded by Bemke, to approve the commercial listing contract with Coldwell Banker Seaworth Realtors for the vacant city-owned building located at 161 and 163 3rd Street North. Parcel IDs 34-08156, add 0 and 3408157, for a 12-month term and a 30-day exclusion for the previously interested party that addressed the committee on, at the September 7th, 2021 meeting. Motion carried. Item 7, consider the sale of vacant city-owned land located at an unaddressed parcel south of Fulton Street between 12th Avenue South and 11th Avenue South. Parcel ID 34-02809. In open session, the committee may vote to go in closed session under Section 19.85, Pern 1, Pern E of the Wisconsin statutes, which reads, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. In closed session, the committee may discuss negotiations and strategy regarding the sale of the old property. The committee may adjourn in closed session or may return to open session. If returning to open session, the committee may continue to consider the sale of the vacant land referenced above and may take action thereon. It's moved by Katnaugh, seconded by Bemke, to go in closed session. The roll call vote resulted in the affirmative. In closed session, the committee discussed a proposed offer from an interested party to purchase the property. It was moved by Katnaugh, seconded by Bemke, to return to open session. Roll call vote resulted in the affirmative. In open session, it was moved by Katnaugh, seconded by Rehm, to sell parcel ID 34-02809 to Bowers Floor Mart Incorporated for $11,500 with a perpetual easement for city-owned utilities on the property and an ingress, ingress and egress for the adjacent property located at 211 12th Avenue South. Parcel ID 34-02804, and that motion carried. Item 8 was adjourned. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Katnaugh, to adjourn. Motion carried, and the meeting adjourned at 5:38 PM. And with that, Chair Honored, I move for adoption of the report.
Patrick?
I just have a quick question. I, I know I, I watched this, but just to refresh my memory, the reason why we just went with Coldwell Banker is why? I mean, did, were there bids out, or how did we decide that we're just choosing Coldwell?
Cal? Do you have thought?
Thank you. When Property and Finance made the original motion, they did not identify a specific Realtor and left it up to staff to choose. And so I've got a good relationship with JR, and I think he's, he's got a good reputation, and so that's who I contacted initially.
Thank you.
Yep. Go ahead, Matt.
I didn't say anything at the meeting, but I guess I'll say it now. Like, I think that we bought it for $90,000. We're talking about selling it for maybe 30, 35. I think that's like the worst deal ever. And I don't know if there's a possibility, is that right? Somewhere around there?
I believe it was about 87.
87?
That we purchased it, or, no, I'm sorry. I think it was 82 that we bought it for, and 87 is what the city assessor assessed it at, fair market.
I don't know if it, and again, I know we already went through the mission, the, the committee meeting, but we may want to rethink, like, if it's not hurting us by holding it and like letting somebody try to come up with some better uses. But if it's lost its life and we're losing money regardless, let's learn from that lesson and not do it again, I suppose. But, just my thoughts.
Go ahead, Jake.
Yeah, and a little background on that, too, is we had a party that came to the committee that was interested in purchasing for assessed value before a market analysis was done and made public that it's not worth that. So obviously, I hope that party is still interested, and they put in an offer. We did put in the contract that they are excluded for, what was it, 30 days? So hopefully, they come forward and make an offer, and that building gets occupied. That's the main goal. So we did move forward that night just to get the building active. And I hope the party that was interested does come forward and, and we get that moving.
Go ahead, Sherri.
Is this, the list price, you said 30,000? Is that the starting price, or is that just what, an asking price is, that, that start?
Yeah, so to back up a little bit further, the, the city assessor, when they look at fair market value, or when they look at assessed value, they also have a computation for fair market value. But it's, right, the city assessor is not in the field. They're not looking at comps essentially like a Realtor is. And I don't believe the city assessor has been in the building recently. So I think there's, that's why there's more discrepancy in terms of the value that they've placed on it and the value that the Realtor's placed on it. And so that's why there's a significant difference in what JR is recommending. We list the property for between 35 and 45,000 and potentially settle on something less versus what I think, again, the, the city assessor thought it was assessed at.
And what, what is the commission rate that he's earning?
Typically, it's 10%.
That's what he's, sorry, that's what he's getting is 10%?
Yes, dependent upon, again, I guess, the terms of the lease and final action by this body. I do also, if I may want to recognize that, again, taking into consideration the use and what ultimately the council would accept as an offer, we may sell it for a dollar if, if somebody wants to put in $200,000 into the building and create 10 jobs and have a flourishing dental office there. And in that instance, right, on a 10% commission, JR would only be getting 10 cents. So I think, depending on the use and depending on the offers on the table, we may need to rethink if, what, what sort of commission we would provide to JR, if he and his listing and the work that he does brings a buyer to the table in an accepted offer by council.
And what is it zoned, I mean, I don't need all the particulars, but is it, is it easier for some business to go in there, or is it going to be more difficult?
So right now, it's Zone B1 Downtown Commercial, and that permits, I mean, think of all the businesses downtown. You're looking at retail, restaurant, office, professional office, light medical type uses. So no industry. Downtown doesn't require a parking component, so they don't necessarily need parking stalls. The, the property does come with seven, I believe, which is a huge plus for property downtown. But again, it's in very rough shape. I, I had a presentation at Property and Finance two months ago that had some interior photos, and, and the photos that I provided don't do it justice. I mean, it is in very rough shape. I think everything would have to be gutted inside. New electrical, new white, or new drywall. I think Todd may have been in the building recently, and our inspectors have been in it recently, and it's, again, in, in, in pretty rough shape.
Thank you.
Patrick?
First of all, I'd like to start out by saying that thanks for Tom and the Finance Committee. This was a marathon month here with all the meetings that we had. I think during the meetings, we had some good discussions and some good questions were brought up. And then I, I thought we were moving in the right direction. Wisconsin Rapids being in the top 2% of municipalities, being taxed, we're in the highest percent. And then I thought we were moving in the right direction, but then this council wet the bed, and you guys did the same thing everybody else does. I do want to thank Tom. He could did a real professional job on every meeting.
So we only have a motion right now on, we don't have a second yet. Jay, okay, thank you. So we've taken up, if I'm correct, reports A, B, and C, and we still have D yet to do. But D has pretty much all closed sessions. I just want to clarify that. So currently, we have a motion on the floor to adopt reports, as I said, from October 26th, October 28th, and November 2nd. Any discussion? I think, Tim, you handed out the, did you do minutes, or somebody do minutes on, yeah? Okay, thanks. On the next one. So let's, we can vote on this motion. Ryan?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Sherri?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
Patrick?
No.
Jay?
Aye.
So that motion carried seven As and one N. So we still have Finance Report D. Do you have those minutes, Tom? I think I have them here.
Are those tonight's?
Yes.
Okay.
And I, and then we have closed sessions set aside at the end of the meeting for, for those items also. So if we want to hold them out.
Okay.
Thanks, Jeff.
Okay, the Finance and Property Committee met at 4:45 PM on Tuesday, November 16th, 2021, in the council chambers at City Hall. All members of Finance and Property Committee were present. Also, attendants were Mayor Blazer, Alderson Veneman, Alderson Zachar, Suzyel, Kyle Kearns, and Tim DeSorci. A list of others is, in attendance is on the file in clerk's office. Item 1, call the meeting to order. Chairperson Rehm called the meeting to order at 4:48 PM. Item 2, the committee may vote to go in closed session under Section 19.85, Pern 1, Pern E of the Wisconsin statutes, which reads, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. In closed session, the committee may discuss negotiations and strategy regarding emergency medical service, ambulances, service, intergovernmental agreements with area... ambulances, service, intergovernmental agreements with area municipalities, including the town of Port Edwards and the city of Nekusa. The committee will return to open session and may take action on EMS, ambulance intergovernmental agreements with the town of Port Edwards and the city of Nekusa and other municipalities. As moved by Bemke, seconded by Rayhome to go into closed session, roll call vote resulted in the affirmative. The committee discussed the EMS ambulance intergovernmental agreements with the town of Port Edwards and the city of Nekusa. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Rayhome to go back into closed session. The roll call vote resulted in the affirmative. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Katnaugh to approve the agreements with the town of Port Edwards and the city of Nekusa as presented and to propose and propose, approve agreements with the town of Cranmore, Ho-Chunk Casino, and the village of Bearden at the same per cap it has the town of Port Edwards and the city of Nekusa agreements. In addition, the city is directed to review the current ambulance rates motion carried. Item three, consider the lease of the Wisconsin Rapids Community Theater within the Centaria Center at 220 Third Avenue South, parcel ID 3402596. In open session, the committee may vote to go into closed session under Section 19.85, parent one, parent E of the Wisconsin statutes, which reads deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. In closed session, the committee may discuss negotiations and strategy regarding the lease or a portion of the above property. The committee may adjourn in closed session or may return to open session. If returning to open session, the committee may continue to consider the lease for a portion of the building to reference above and may take action thereon. As moved by Rayhome, seconded by Bemke to go into closed session, roll call vote resulted in the affirmative. The committee discussed lease options for the Wisconsin Rapids Community Theater Incorporated and Timothy Young, Executive Director for the Wisconsin Rapids Community Theater Incorporated, addressed the committee. Item four was to adjourn in closed session. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Katnaugh to adjourn, the motion carried and the meeting adjourned at 6:05 PM. And with that, I guess.
I'm sorry, go ahead. You, we just found another Finance meeting that we will, from November 4th. So.
I got it too, but it wasn't on my list.
Okay, so we'll bring that forward next month, but there's no action on it. So we'll take it up then, since it's not on the agenda technically. No, it's okay, I didn't realize that we had another one.
We can't do it after or not?
We can't, well, we could just do it next month. We'll put it on the agenda and get you a little extra reading time. So we have a motion to, do we need to hold out any of the items for closed session at the end? Or was everybody good with closed sessions item? Okay, so we have a motion to adopt the report. Is there a second? I'm sorry, who's that, was that? Sorry, Jake, thanks. Is there any further discussion then? Okay, seeing none. Ryan?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Sheri?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
Patrick?
Steen.
And Jay?
Aye.
So that motion carried seven As with one abstention. Okay, we're on to item E, the Public Works Committee meeting held on November 2nd. Mr. Austin.
Public Works Committee met on Tuesday, November 2nd, 2021 in the council chambers at City Hall via and via remote video conference. Matt Zacher and Patrick Delaney were in attendance, others attending are on file in the Clerk's Office. Item number one is call to order. The meeting was called to order at 6:01 with Matt Zacher acting as chairperson in my absence. Item two, review 2022 to 2026 Public Works Construction CIP. Motion by Zacher, seconded by Delaney to approve the 2022 to 2026 Public Works Capital Improvement Plan, motion carried 2-0. Item three, consider approving a preliminary resolution to reconstruct Rosenkran Street from Ninth Ave North to East Terminy. Motion by Zacher, seconded by Delaney to approve a preliminary resolution to reconstruct Rosenkran Street from Ninth Ave North to East Terminy, motion carried 2-0. Item four, review DPW October Activities Report. DPW report was reviewed, a 10-year CIP was requested along with extending project-specific details from one year to three years. Item five, review referral list, the referral list was reviewed. Item six was adjourned, motion by Delaney, seconded by Zacher to adjourn, motion carried 2-0. The meeting was adjourned at 7:42 PM. And with that, I would like to adopt the report of the Public Works Committee on 11/2.
So we have a motion by Ryan.
Second.
Second by Dean. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing no further discussion. Ryan?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Sheri?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
And Jay?
Aye.
That motion carried eight As, zero As. We are on to item F, which is the Human Resource Committee that met on November 15th. Jay?
Thank you. Human Resource Committee met in the council chambers on Monday, November 15th. Item one, meeting was called to order at 5:03 PM. Item two was discussed and considered for approval, proposed changes to the vacation policy. Motion by Evanson, seconded by Veneman to approve the vacation policy as presented, motion carried 3-0. Item three, motion by Bemke, seconded by Veneman to go into closed section under Section 19.851E Wisconsin stats, which reads deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Roll call vote was taken, all members voted in the affirmative, motion carried 3-0. A, in closed session, the committee discussed negotiation and bargaining strategy regarding labor negotiations with IAFF and WRPPA. Item four, motion by Veneman, seconded by Evanson to return into open session, motion carried 3-0. Item five, motion by Veneman, seconded by Evanson to go into closed session pursuant of Section 19851C of Wisconsin statutes, which reads considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Roll call vote was taken, all members voted in the affirmative, motion carried 3-0. A, in closed session, the committee discussed compensation for a public employee. Six, the committee will adjourn in closed session and the meeting was adjourned at 7:51 PM. That I submitted for approval.
So do we want to, there's an item to hold out, there's a closed session at the end? Do you want to hold out that item till the end or?
Yep, I'll make a motion to hold that item out at the end of the, at the end of the council meeting.
So we'll accept your, if you have your original motion and then your request to hold out item five to the end of the meeting?
Correct.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to adopt the report, holding out item five till the end of the meeting. Any further discussions? Okay, seeing none, Ryan?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Sheri?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
Patrick?
I'm Steen.
And Jay?
Aye.
That motion carried seven As, two, one, and one abstention. So we are on to Legislative Committee meeting held November 8th. Tom?
Meeting of the Legislative Committee was held via remote video conferencing originating from the City Hall Council Chambers on Monday, November 8th, 2021 at 2:30 PM. All members were present. Also present were Alderson Veneman, Delaney, and Zacher, and Jim Brown, Eric Daven, Urban Lovins, Ryan Hartman, Sue Shill, Mayor Blazer, Tyler Mickelson, and Jennifer Gosse. Item one was called to meeting order. Chairperson Rayhome called the meeting to order at 2:30 PM. Item two, review and consider for approval and amendment to Chapter 2 of the municipal code, which would eliminate term limits for waterworks and lighting commissioners. Motion by Bemke, seconded by Austin to approve the ordinance as presented, motion carried 3-0. Item three, review and consider an ordinance revising the secondhand article dealer and pawnbroker ordinance. Motion by Bemke, seconded by Austin to approve the ordinance as presented, that motion carried 3-0. Item four, discuss emergency declarations and COVID-19 protocols and policies. The committee referred this matter for continued discussion at the council meeting. Item five, discuss vaccination mandates. The committee referred this matter for continued discussion at the council meeting. Motion by Austin, seconded by Bemke to adjourn, that motion carried 3-0. The meeting adjourned at 3:32 PM. And with that, Chair on your move for adoption of report.
So we have a motion, go ahead, Ryan.
I'd like to make a correction of the minutes. Item three, motion was by Austin, seconded by Bemke.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion, questions? Go ahead, Patrick.
Since the appropriate time, I said that we were going to discuss the vaccination mandates. Is this the appropriate time to do that?
So I guess with unanimous consent, you, everybody good with holding out item? Four? You're good, everybody good? Four and five?
Just five, I think that we had discussed the declaration and it's no longer going right now. If we still want to discuss that, I'm fine with that.
I think we can just hold out item five unless somebody wants item four held out. So we have a motion, a second to adopt the Legislative Committee minutes, holding out item five. Okay, Austin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Matt?
Aye.
Tom? Sheri?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
And Jay?
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries eight As, zero As. Okay, regarding item five, Patrick?
I had come up with a paper that was passed around by Matt. I thank everybody that was out sick, everybody that did make it. And sorry that I wasn't able to be here in person, but that was something that I would like more discussion on, get council's thoughts or, well, and I would like a vote, yes or no on it.
I guess maybe the appropriate thing would start with a motion? I think, yeah, if you want to start, I think Sheri, did you have your hand up first or?
Sorry, I'm, just pack up a step. So if this is discussion on the proposed resolution, right? Is that, or can we talk about, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, the vaccination mandate, regarding the vaccination and that, yes.
The content that's in this resolution?
I think, yeah, he's, just a general discussion about that, correct?
Well, the resolution was, was not part of the Legislative Committee meeting packet and it's not part, was not part of the packet given to council. So I think to have general discussion over whether that's something that the council wants to do and then we can bring it back at a, at a future meeting or if it's something the council doesn't want to do, then it wouldn't come back. But trying to find it here, yeah, I don't think it was part of the packet.
I don't see it.
Yeah, no, it wasn't. So I would be more comfortable with a general vaccine mandate discussion versus voting specifically on a resolution that has not been noticed to the public.
Then we can bring a resolution back through the council. Go ahead.
I just don't, I don't know, I, looking through it and I had looked through it before and I just don't think we need that. I mean, everyone has their own right whether to get vaccinated or not. I don't like government having to tell them what they can, can't do. And I don't, I just don't think it's our role to do this. You know, the health department doesn't have anything similar to this. So I guess I just, I, I don't know. Interested in what, what, who put this together, or, you know, the information that's in, why or why, what?
I think Matt was next. Oh, or Patrick, go ahead.
So I put this together. I've had some city employee, their family member, their wife had actually reached out to me and would like something where the council stands behind the employees as far as their choice for vaccine mandate, that's one. Second part of this is the, I take care of disabled people and also elderly people. And Wisconsin rightly so views the rights of the individuals to accept or deny any type of medical procedure. And we have a business in town that is requiring that you show your medical history to them. I don't think that's right and I'd like to stand up for the people that I take care of and their rights. It's called resident rights. I think everybody should have the right to their own personal medical information to be kept private.
I guess, I mean, yes, that totally makes sense, but I just, I don't know what this resolution is going to do. I mean, if, if the feds, I mean, everything supersedes everything. If the feds say this, the state mandates this, I mean, If the feds say this, the state mandates this, I mean, the city council, I mean, Sue, I mean, a business can do what they want. That's their right, so I, I guess I just don't know what point the resolution would be, except, I, I mean, I get it, saying that.
I, I like that, and yes, it all depends on, like, what side of the aisle you're on as far as freedoms go. I think a lot of it goes back to the, what I call the lazy bakers, where they decided not to, because there's a lot of references that can be made towards them disallowing for a gay couple to bake their wedding cake, in my opinion. I think they should bake it, especially if they're saying that they're Christian, that is what they're supposed to do, but they're using public funds for their roads, using public water, sewer, and stuff like that, so that's my views on it.
Anyone else?
Just think, and hopefully it doesn't come to this. I, I realize everybody's got to take a deep breath and step back, and, but, you're right. Federal will supersede, you know, but for us to be able to take a stand and say we, we, we protect the rights of our residents to have their own choices and choose what's going to happen with something like this, I think is important, but you're right, it also, it comes down to which side of the aisle you're on, and, and what position in life you're in right now, so there's no easy answer to it, but it definitely worth the conversation, and, and again, maybe it doesn't mean anything in the big picture, except for the fact that we did our best to stick up for the residents and their rights.
I guess, I don't know who was first. Go ahead, Jake.
Thank you. I, I guess individually as a council member, if you're against vaccinations, I think you can put that memo out yourself, or scream it from the rooftops. I don't think a resolution is necessary. At the bottom of this, it actually has a, the signature would be from the mayor and the city clerk, who are, would not even be voting or considering this. I think if the mayor wanted to put out a resolution, he could do so. I, I just don't think this is necessary.
Yeah, just, all resolutions adopted by the council are signed by the, the mayor and the tre, or in the clerk, just, it's the legality.
Whether you want it or not.
Yeah, it's just part of the process.
I know.
I just think, I mean, like, it says section two businesses, and I, and I get it. I think it's freedom for the individual, but, you know, us telling businesses in Wisconsin to ever prohibited from requiring patrons of customers to provide any documentation to get any service or to gain entry or trans, you know, I mean, I don't know what every business in town does. I mean, if it, I mean, I don't want to tell a business what they can and can't do if it's something da-da-da-da-da-da, I don't, I mean, I just, I just don't think it's necessary.
Matt?
I agree with that to the extent of it's happened before, where it's gotten really ugly in terms of how businesses treat a certain group of people, and then you get into the legalities, as, as Sue told me about, protected class, stuff like that. It's not there yet, and hopefully it doesn't get there. Certainly, you know, there's pointers in that direction to some degree, so we'll, we've kind of got to ride it out and see what happens, but again, I think it's worth the discussion on a respectful level to just talk some of this stuff through, because it does impact all of us, no matter which side of the aisle we're on, and, and if we do just let it ride the way it is, what's, what comes next? And I know that's, you know, conspiracy fear stuff, all that stuff, but it's out there, you know, so it's worth the discussion. Thanks.
Any other thoughts? What are your wishes?
Sorry, we're not voting on the resolution, because like you said, it's not
Correct.
in there, so it's just discussion?
Yeah, I guess, or if you want to.
Or it could be a referral back, or at that time, or something like that, right?
Or recommend a resolution at the next meeting, or, or do nothing? Just trying to get probably just more of a general consensus, if that's a resolution you want to take up at the council meeting?
I'd be in favor of talking about it again at the council.
With a resolution?
Yes.
So, no? Yeah? Can't you just turn this back as a referral to the council? Or a referral to, back to a committee?
Okay, back to legislative, and then they're going to talk about it, and then if they come up with a resolution, then that would come back to council.
I guess, I guess regardless, if they, we came up with, that committee came up with the resolution or not, it would still be on the minutes, and
Right, okay.
it would still come back to council. I guess that's up to Patrick, how he wants to proceed with this, but that's, I, I think that's a possibility.
I would like, I'd like just to have it out there and have everybody vote on it, if it's yes or no. I think with the discussions that we've had tonight, I think that it has at least made progress, so.
Just legally, does it, does it have, doesn't something have to be brought forward by a committee? As, as a, as a referral to the committee, and the committee brings it forward to take action on it?
Yes, as a general rule, right.
So that's, that's what should happen, is it should be brought back as a referral to a committee, and the committee brings it forth for us to vote on it, not just something that, and I don't, I'm not saying it in a bad way, but something that just a council person didn't just bring forward and to vote on it. I think it would be cleaner and more legal, right, to do it that way?
Right, I mean, I'm not saying that because legislative already took it up and said, we want the whole council to talk about it, that you couldn't decide, well, instead of going back to the legislative where there's only three people, we want it to come right back to council, but it, the general way it's handled is yes, it could be referred back to the committee to work on a specific resolution or not, and then come back to council.
So they, they talked about it, it's just, this resolution just wasn't brought forward to the committee?
Well, it was just emails right, right before, and so we didn't really, I mean, I guess it was talked about for a while, and then it was just, well, let's talk about it at council. So I, I guess a motion could be in order to refer it back to legislative, and then legislative can make a recommendation, or back to council, if that's.
Jay, did you have a, your hand up, Jay?
I, I did, but I think the question was answered.
Okay.
Is there anything in the ordinance that should be changed?
I guess, since it wasn't part of the packet, I, I probably will have some, some thoughts on that, and I think it's more of, more general thoughts. I don't, I, you know, I could tweak some of the language, but I, you know, it's, I mean, I, I, I think I tweaked a little bit of the language, and that I think can be something that could be discussed at legislative then, and then by the time it gets to council, if it's, if that's a recommendation that, you know, it might be cleaned up just a little bit, or at least there'll be a discussion about it.
Is that something that you and I can work on, and then send it to legislative? Or do you want to do it on your own?
Yeah, I mean, I could, I could look at it and then send it to you, email to you, and before legislative.
Sure.
I have a question, so, in the part about the, no Wisconsin Rapids government entity or its subdivisions agents are assigned, does that become a human resources thing rather than a legislative?
Well, I mean, you're, the council would basically be saying that this is, I mean, I, I guess it would, I would argue that it's probably more legislative than HR.
I was just wondering, because it is, we're talking about employees as opposed to citizens, non, non-employees.
Right, yeah, right, part of this is employees, and then part of it is business.
Would there be a way to separate that into two ordinances, one being with the employees and one being for the citizens?
Yes, there could be, sure.
Would that make the most sense to do that?
Probably, because I think people probably have different thoughts on maybe one versus the other, so, sure.
So do we have a motion to refer it back to legislative? Or do we? We don't have a motion?
No.
There's, there hasn't been a motion yet. Yeah. It was just kind of a general thing, but it wasn't a motion or a second. So we don't have to vote on, if he wants to refer this to a committee, that's We can do it at the end here, too. But that's up to him, correct? We don't have to vote on a referral.
Well, right, or someone can make a motion to dispose of it and not, and not do anything with it, too. I mean, I guess I'm, I'm not sure what people want to do, and it would be the majority of you to decide that, so.
Is there a motion?
So a motion. No one's made a motion, so, got a lot of options.
I'll move that we No.
It was just discussion, right? So, I mean, like.
So, yeah, Tom was putting one together. A motion to dispose of the item and basically not take it up, correct? And then Jake seconded it. So we do have a motion and a second to dispose of the item. Is there any further discussion on that? Go ahead, Ryan.
I do not believe it's this council's place to dictate how a business is run within the city, or is it this council's place to dictate an individual's vaccine status? So I am, I am in favor of this motion.
Any other discussion? Seeing none? Ryan?
Aye.
Dean?
So we're wanting to dispose of it?
Correct.
No.
Matt?
No.
Tom?
Aye.
Sherry?
Aye.
Uh, Jake?
Aye.
Uh, Patrick?
No.
And Jay?
Aye. I, I guess I have a question. I've, I've never seen a vote on, on a referral before, I, I just.
You've never seen a vote on a referral? Well, the, the referral was to discuss man, vaccine mandates, so then the referral is, we don't want anything to become of it, there's no resolution to be referred back, so I, I mean, I, I think it's happened, it's definitely happened before. Yes, it has. Yeah, I, I, I mean, when there's nothing specifically about the, you know, if it's this discussion item, or even if it was a, a referral of something, and, you know, to take action on something, if, if the majority of people don't want to continue with it, I mean, you can always bring it back, I guess, to make a referral again. If you're asking for a point of order, I guess I, in the body can decide whether they want to, how they want to handle it. Yeah, I guess I don't believe that a committee or the council has an absolute obligation to continue to discuss something, you know, I, if, but, you know, I, I guess I, well, I I apologize if you feel like I'm, you know, this is Well, no, I think the comment was made that, well, we wanted to, you know, like, it seemed like I wanted to dispose of it, and that's how I made my, gave my advice, so I.
No, Tom, Tom's the one who decided that to dispose of it, but we had talked about.
Right, but the question was, well, how, how did this happen, and then the comment was made, so I.
Okay, let's move on to item 12, reports of other committees, commission boards, and departmental reports. Jake?
Thank you. I'm going to speak on the Parks and Rec Commission, held November eighth. So, so for, as long as we've had rates for the aquatic center, which is going into three years, we've known that the residents are paying more than non-residents in multiple cases. I've brought this concern up at several council meetings, the states way back. I've mentioned it to Parks and Rec committee members, and now at the Parks and Rec Commission meeting, they propose that we keep the same rates as last year, which favor non-residents more than they do residents, when you take into account that the taxpayers pay about $70 per 100K of their property value towards the aquatic center, yet they're still required to pay at the gate or on a season pass for it. So for example, if you own $150,000 home, and you're getting a season pass, you're paying 120 for the season pass, and then 140 on your property taxes, versus a non-resident pays 240. I think there could be many ways to address this problem, however, none of them were even taken up or discussed. I understand the council doesn't have the ability to take this issue up, it is on the Parks and Recs, so it stands where it is unless they decide to take it up again, which I hope they do, because it's disappointing to see that it hasn't been taken more serious to figure out a way for the residents to not put the bill for the aquatic center again, and either get the, the same rate, or a fair shake, and I know it's been brought up that as a city, we decided to move forward with that, so we should fit some of the bill more. I don't think that's the case, I think we could figure out a way where it's more fair towards residents.
Good, Sherry.
I just agree with everything that Jake just said. I know that it's on their next agenda, I believe, for season pass rates. The only thing that was decided was the daily rates, if I'm.
Other way around.
Other way around.
The season was that way, and then the daily rates, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I just, I agree. I, I don't understand why the citizens are paying twice, it's just.
Go ahead, Dean.
I agree with you and both of you, I'm on that commission, if you don't, I'll know, and this isn't done yet, I don't think, we're, we're talking still, and I think, especially in the terms of the daily passes, I know that one of the things that, that was of urgency is, was the thought by staff was to get the season pass price in line for the discounts so that they could do them as Christmas presents or holiday gifts, and so that was one of the reasons that it started to move forward at the last meeting that you were talking about, but in terms of the daily passes, if I, I still intend to discuss this more on a, on a basis, and I don't, I don't, do not think this has to be done set in stone this early in the, in the game yet, it's only November, so I continue, I believe, I agree with what both of you have said, so.
Go ahead.
I just wish that it would have, I mean, not been so urgent that they went ahead and set some, you know what I mean?
and set something, you know what I mean? Like, I guess they would have backed up or thought about it a little sooner than staff saying, this is what I feel, you know, this is what it should be because of A, B, and C. And it's, I just wish it would have been a little different.
Go ahead, Jake.
In regards to the Christmas presents, purchasing season passes, that, we've talked about it in past years, and that was the same reason that they gave the rush towards setting rates. And then we'd get past that. And then it would be, well, the rates are set, people bought passes, do we give them refunds? And I would just challenge them this year that if you have to give refunds or whatever you have to do to figure out how to make this better for residents, that the commission does that. There's still plenty of time. So I hope to see that.
And what are your wishes on the reports?
Second.
We have a motion by Jake, seconded by Jake, to adopt the reports. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Ryan?
Aye.
Hold on, I'm, sorry, I got a. Dean?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
And Tom?
Aye.
Sherry?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
Patrick?
Abstain.
And Jake?
Aye.
That motion carried seven A's with one abstention. Okay, any referrals to committee? Jake?
I'd like to make a referral to where this is appropriate, whether it be the council meeting on the 22nd or the next finance and property committee meeting, that we take up a budget amendment for the McMillan Library Budget 2022 and consider $150,000 deduction from their budget for the 2022 year appropriation.
Any other referrals? Okay.
Hey, Shane?
Yes.
Or Mayor Blazer, sorry. Is this the appropriate time to refer Patrick's letter for vaccine mandates to legislative committee?
Yep.
Then I would like to do that.
So we have a six.
Well, yeah, I mean, generally there's, I'm, I'm, there's a six-month rule that once something's been, you know, so people can't just keep bringing the same thing back over and over, that generally it's not heard again, but you can suspend the rules and do that, I guess.
Is there a motion that we need to make to suspend the rules to bring that back, then? What are you recommending?
Well, I guess it's up to the committee, the committee chair to decide to put it on the agenda, not with that rule. And if the committee, legislative committee wants to suspend the rules, to hear it, then, then it will be heard. So, or just put it down the agenda, I guess. I don't want to look like I'm, you know, whatever.
So the chair of the committee can determine whether they want to suspend the rules or put it in there?
There is no chair there.
The financing property, because that's where it's being referred back to, correct?
Tom's the chair of legislative committee.
Legislative, sorry, that's what I meant. Sorry.
Yep. Okay, any other? Yes. And so, what's that?
That's, so that's just we took action of not to do.
Correct. But.
And they, I mean, it can be brought back, but there is this.
Six-month, she was just saying, yeah. But then you could.
And it can be suspended.
Correct.
Which, but that we just took the action tonight.
Correct. Yeah, there's.
Well.
The referral has been made back to legislative, so you'll have to deal with it, Tom. Deal with it, Tom.
Okay.
We can just put it on the agenda and.
Any other referrals? Okay, then we've got, item 14 is done. Item 15, item 16, regarding Human Resource Committee, item number five from the meeting held on November 15 in open session, the council may vote to go into closed session pursuant to Section 19.85, parent one, parent C of the Wisconsin statutes, which reads, considering employment promotion compensation performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. In closed session, the council may discuss compensation for a public employee. What are your wishes?
I'll move to go into closed session.
Second.
Yeah, we're going to take a break. But let's do a roll call and then we can take five or 10. Okay, Austin?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Tom? Sherry?
No.
Sure.
No. Um, Jake?
No.
Patrick?
Aye.
And Jake?
Aye.
That motion carried five A's, two three N's. And we're going to take a little break.